I'll call this meeting, the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to work. Roll call, please. Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Here.
Leyland?
Here.
Little? Jelka?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Please join us in a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll first entertain a motion on the agenda received as proposed or as amended.
So moved.
Okay. So moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 The agenda is approved. Next we'll move on to public comments. Is anybody in the boardroom or on Zoom that wishes to address the board on something that's not an agenda item? Please do so at this time. All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to years of service award to employees with 20 or more years of service.
We have two awards today. With 25 years of service, Jenna Campbell from Consolidated Communications, and with 30 years of service, James Wymer from Conservation. Would you like to come up and get your certificate?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Anyone who wants to speak can say anything, Jim?
I knew you were gonna ask.
I had to.
Thanks, Lynda. No, you know, thinking back 30 years, which I can hardly remember anymore, it seems like, but this is a kid that graduated from you and I, did an internship at Hartman Reserve Nature Center, and thought he was going to leave the community and do, go someplace else. But 30 years later, here I am, and I'm grateful for it. I'm thankful for it. And, and there's been a lot of ups and downs in 30 years. But I've been able to raise a family in this community and from this community. And now I'm helping to raise grandkids in the community, which is a lot of fun, too, as a granddad. So, no, I appreciate working. I've worked a lot different. I don't see you very often, but I do attend our Conservation Board meetings and, and get to converse with whoever represents there once in a while, too. But just thankful for keeping this young 22-year-old around when he was started off and, and looking forward, I'm not gonna say another 30 years, because there's no way. But five years, if I'm up here for five years, maybe it's a close to retirement certificate. I don't know. But I've enjoyed, really enjoyed basically implementing conservation practices in this, in this county with, with landowners. And, and when I retire someday, I will be proud of my service here. So, appreciate it.
Thank you for your dedication. Thank you for your dedication and service, and those conservation practices will have generations of impact. So it's...
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. You will now move on to claims and payments. This is a resolution. The Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and let the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against a various settlement of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Michelle?
Good morning, Board. Our bill payment today is $287,426.10. That's a little bit different than the version we sent out Friday. Just wanted to let you know I was contacted by the Barclay Township trustee Sunday evening, and their fire truck is delayed coming in. So they, we pulled that payment off, that $15,000. And there are a couple other small changes, too. Then the 60-40 fund, that payment is $2,263.05. It's construction season, so we're buying rock again, some large expenses there. And then the other large one, conservation, was paying for Blackhawk Park road repair, and that was $48,988.60. Everything appears to be in order. Does anyone have questions today?
Any questions, Board? All right. Hearing none. This is a resolution. Roll call, please. Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. Next we will receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Morning, Brian Brennan, Assistant County Engineer. Construction continues throughout the county. We have our two paving projects on Dunkerton Road and Canfield Road. We also have a bridge repair project up on Cedar Ropsie that's moving along nicely. This next week, we do have two new projects that'll be starting up. Our bridge crew will be out on Tama Road outside of Laporte, starting to put several culvert replacement in advance of the paving project for next year. We also have some bridge painting that'll be done on Dunkerton Road. That's a project to finish up from last year. As of this week, the water is down off of all the gravel roads, so the roads have been repaired at this point. They're all back open. Crews will be shifting to a lot of the debris removal that came in with the high waters. So, any questions?
Thank you.
Morning, Board. Amanda Fezmer, HR Director. I just want to bring your attention to an upcoming event and just ask permission that we post this in the courthouse. It is the Barriers No More Summit and Career Fair, and it's being held Thursday, June 20. The summit is from 8:00 to noon. It is free registration for employers in our area. And then the career fair is from noon to 3:00, all held at the Waterloo Career Center, also free for job seekers to attend. The event is organized in partnership with One Cedar Valley, Iowa Works, Midwest Bank, Blackhawk County, University of Northern Iowa, PDCM, Jesse Cosby Neighborhood Center, Cedar Valley Sherm, and Cities of Cedar Falls in Waterloo. I've talked with department heads about this event and just encouraged representation from the county to come learn about, from the keynote speaker, Yvette Crane, who is a Director of Talent and Inclusion and Diversity at TransAmerica. And one of our very own also is a speaker on the panel at the summit. Yolanda Lovliss will be there, representing Veteran Affairs. And it's, has several panel members honoring World Refugee Day that day. And so we'll be having a lot of great conversations around different things that we can do to help reduce barriers to successful employment. So...
Excellent. That's a great thing.
Anyway, so these posters will be around. Encourage department heads and managers and supervisors to attend. And again, it's a summit and a career fair, and then job seekers will be there. And we'll have a booth and be talking with job seekers about the different roles that we have here at the county. So, and then the only thing is I just need a signature from the chair for our life insurance.
All right.
That finally came through, so I'll get that from you afterwards. But, any questions at all? And okay to have Lori post this? I did provide them to her, so.
No, that's great.
And then our office will be actually supporting the resume writing and interview workshop, which is June 11, ahead of the Summit and Career Fair. So we're doing that with Iowa Works. So we will maybe out our office that day for part of the day to help support that workshop. So, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Mike Hendrickson, Director of Blackhawk County Conservation. Just a couple of updates. Unfortunately, we did have two parks that were shut down for Memorial Day weekend, Blackhawk Park and Sigil Cove Park, where by Fairbank, both are on the mend, and we are expecting to have those open by the weekend. Very little damage done to either one, which is probably due to the fact that for three years, we didn't have any flooding, and we got real good, we got vegetation back, we got good root systems. So we didn't get the washing that we typically will get with something like that. So we're in very good shape, and the crews are working hard to get those back and going. Public is getting very antsy, so we're getting lots of emails and things like that. But we're, if we stay on schedule and tonight doesn't burn us again for some reason, we should be back on track. The second thing is, last week, there were some emails went back and forth with the section of North Union Road with the turtles and that situation. I have been able to make contact with basically the two big players in this. Karen Kincaid, the Wildlife Diversity Program Coordinator with the Iowa DNR, had a good conversation with her. She basically sent me on to Brock, I'm gonna pronounce this Struker, I think that's his name. He is the Protected Species Biologist for the Department of Transportation. And he is really the, the say-so guy in this and decides what's gonna happen with all of this. But anyway, I won't get into details. I'm waiting for Kathy to get back from vacation. They are continuing to send me information and, but I can let you know Brock, within his conversation with me, we are online to have them on-site this summer to begin a, a study of that area. And they, with that study, they will have recommendations for some projects that possibly could help with this. So, we have made the contacts. It's in the works, and I will keep you updated as we get information. Any questions?
Mike, yeah, quick question on, on trail status?
Mm-hmm.
With that, you know, after the flooding and all that and everything.
We luckily, you know, a 91, I'm using the Cedar Falls scale, a 91-foot flood does not impact that trail to the point where it goes over. We really get impacted when it goes over the top, because then it cuts and washes, and then we have repairs and the whole thing. It did not do that to the trail, so we dodged that bullet, and we were holding our breath, because it would just really throw a wrench into everything that's going on. So we're on schedule. They're working. So we're in good shape.
Thanks. Thank you. All right. Any other department heads or elected officials who should provide an update this morning? All right. Hearing none, we will move on to the minutes approved for the May 28, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The minutes are approved. Next is the consent agenda. This will be approved with a single resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Mr. Veder.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. Moving on to other business. Item A, this is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise republic hearing to be held at 9:09 a.m. on Tuesday, June 18, 2024, in Boardroom 201 of the Blackhawk County Courthouse, 316 East Fifth Street, Waterloo, Iowa, and proposed ordinance number 77-286, from a request submitted by Lacey Gardner at 6511 Waverly Road, to rezone 1.51 acres from A Agriculture to AR Agricultural Residential District to build a single, a new single-family home.
So moved.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is item B. This is a motion that the personal requisition for a financial analyst full-time in the board office be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. This is item C. This is a motion to approve the personal requisition submitted for an equipment operator one full-time replacement as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
So moved.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Next is item D. This is discussion possible board action at the cost proposal between Blackhawk County and Clifton Larson Allen, LLP Alexandria, Minnesota, for auditing services for the fiscal years ending June 30, 2024, 2025, and 2026, with a two-year option to extend the agreement be approved as recommended by Michelle Widener, Finance Director.
Did you want to talk about this at all? I was gonna say, I know you provided several things in an email to us as far as information, and I thought you probably had some communication with them as well.
I have. I don't have much to add. We discussed, you know, setting out a request for proposal, and through discussion with several people, they, the auditing business is kind of changing. There's a nationwide shortage of CPAs, but it's especially acute in Iowa right now. And we felt it was, if we got a fair price, that it would be in the county's best interest to try to just retain our current auditors. There's a significant amount of work done, both by the audit firm and also by countywide staff, each time you change auditors. And right now, our financial roles, we have several vacancies. The Health Department, the one that we just talked about filling this morning, and there's another position that's vacant in the auditor's office. So it would create, I think, some real hardships to change at this time. And it did seem that the pricing we have from Clifton Larson Allen is fair. So, and they have some really nice tools that I had the opportunity to see for the first time last year that help all of us with the audit to make it go efficiently and smoothly. And that, those are all the reasons that we're suggesting that we accept the proposal from CLA.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Yes, we moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions?
I was just gonna ask the question, just like, 'cause I didn't look it up, too, as far as, not an out clause, but if we were to go into the process like we do with other vendors, and is there a time limit that we notify them or them us?
I think it'll probably be a 90-day.
90 days. Okay. I just wondered. I thought, too, if there was something that we were unhappy with at some point in the future, it was just like anything else, as far as we'd have that discussion.
Yes. They, you would, you would at least want to finish an annual engagement, but you definitely could withdraw before the end of the proposal if you chose to.
Thank you.
For any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Mr. Veder.
Little?
No.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. We'll now move on to the work session. This is discussion, possible board action regarding the Washburn sewer system.
Everybody's favorite topic, sewers, right? Especially this time of year with the weather. But we, we at least don't need to talk about, um, that sort of, whoops. There we go. All right. As most of you know, I got to learn this new last year, that Washburn, because it's not an incorporated community, the sewer system for that, I guess I'm gonna call it neighborhood or area, is directly supervised by the Board of Supervisors, which is sometimes unusual for counties to play that role. We, the, looking at the budget for fiscal '25, we are projecting a deficit, expenses exceeding revenue, and that's where the expenses really budgeted at the minimum for maintenance and to keep operations running. So it does include some pump repair. But it includes nothing for what I would call true capital improvements. And the cash reserves for the fund are not high. So we, we cannot afford many years of dipping into that. So that, that is what alerted me, that we really do need to address rates in the system at this time. Rates have been flat for the last 11 years. We have not raised sewer rates there since 2008. But over that time, our maintenance costs have increased. And probably you remember that we did approve a new contract with Urban Services just over a year ago. And that was the first actual new contract since 2000, when this system was started. So that, because they hadn't had increases in that time, there were some increases for that contract. And again, operating revenues are no longer covering the maintenance expenses. And this is a, the difficulty with this is it's a very small neighborhood. There's only about 385 users. So there are not very many homes to be able to pay for increased expenses. The board had been talking about, even before I started here, about investing some of our federal ARPA funds in the system. And we have started working on that. The pump panels are being upgraded, and that is well underway. I don't know if it's about half-done now. At one time, if the weather cooperates, we hope to be done by December, but it, some of that may have to overlap into next summer. There are several other repairs that need to be done. There's a manhole that really needs to be repaired. Department of Natural Resources does have that on their radar. And there are also some lagoon valves that need to be repaired and an air release valve. There are some other things that we are still looking into, and that would be whether the lagoon needs to or should be dredged at this time. The potential for installing backup generators for the pumps, so that if power goes out, they don't all have to shut, not use their water and sewer. And the lagoon fencing, you are required by DNR to have a certain amount of fencing, certain quality, and there's, some of the fencing that's out there has some issues, so we may need to replace that. So those are the projects that we're thinking about. Hopefully, maybe will be paid for with the ARPA dollars that we've already set aside. So I've put together just some options for rates to think about. And I think one thing to keep in the back of your mind, if we had raised rates annually just at the rate of inflation, the rate would have been $31 a month as of July of 2023. And that's just option one, maintenance only. So we're staying under that, potentially with that option one of maintenance only. But we also, I also wanted to offer a different option that will give us a little more cushion for unexpected repairs, other expense increases that I'm not aware of today. So that is, whoops, what option two is showing you. And that starts out with raised to $30 a month, and the current rate is $21 a month, by the way. I meant to say that. And then continuing over, I'm suggesting only a three-year schedule, but I thought we might want to just pass three years at one time. That allows the residents to plan and know that's coming. I'm not comfortable going out more than three years. There's just too many things, and particularly the legal thing around sewer, that I don't know what might come our way. Hopefully, we can get through the three years. I also, boy, I keep hitting that. I also put together an option that if we wanted to be able to have this system pay for repairs, and that would be option three on here, to cover maintenance, repairs, some capital, but that's a substantial monthly increase in cost from $21 to $55. And then I've tried to just build in a little more in years two and three, in all three options to, to cover any increases in cost. And if we were not using the ARPA funds, those rates would, that's $25 a month about to a user. That's what that's worth. If, if we had about, I think I used about an 11-, 12-year bond issue repayment, because that's typically what we've been doing. So I, I thought maybe we just, I would present this today, and you could think about it if you choose to, unless you think you're ready to make decisions at this time.
So the million dollars that we talk about with the ARPA funds, as it relates to those planned improvements and possible additional improvements, that helps with all of those or just some of those?
That's unknown at this time. Hopefully, it would cover all of them or most of them. But until we get further along in the process with each project, I don't know the cost.
So do we have estimates of timing? And I assume that's something we coordinate with Ben or?
Ben, and we, we, we need to have an engineer help us with some of those projects. And I have kind of put, I, we, Ben and I have met with some engineers preliminarily. Mr. Schwartz had wanted us to deal with the rate increase, I think, before we pursued any further projects. So I haven't done anything more about getting an engineer hired. Some of those projects just have to be designed by an engineer. Some are not. That manhole repair is a small cost, relatively small cost, and DNR has told Urban Services, as long as they're simply repairing or replacing an existing manhole, they don't need a permit and they don't need an engineer. But many of the other projects would require that assistance. So we'll have to tackle that as we move forward.
With that $22,000 gap between revenue and expense, what's the balance of that fund?
I looked at that this morning. I think it's somewhere between $100,000 and $200,000. So, that sounds like a lot, but if we have one significant emergency repair, that's gone or may not even be adequate. So I...
So it's between $100,000 and $200,000?
I believe so. I'll, I'll have to, I'll email you later with the actuals, because my memory may be wrong today. But it's low.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I mean, I think we're gonna need to end up somewhere around the options here. And I do think, you know, we could think about different ways we want to communicate this with, with the residents. And so I'm, I'm open to whether we want to do a town hall meeting out there, or, or whatever, whatever the desire of the board is, but...
Do you have, at this point in time, some of those planned improvements and possible additional improvements cost figures for those estimates at least, or no?
We, we have, I don't know who developed them. I do have amounts that someone put together. So, yeah, I can go down that list. The manhole repairs, we're hoping to get done for about $25,000. I hesitate to bring these, the amounts up, because I don't, I really don't know who prepared the amounts, and I don't know how accurate they are. The lagoon valve repairs, we have scheduled at $100,000. That air release valve replacement, I think, only at $10,000. The lagoon dredging could be as much as $300,000, I believe. The backup generators, we're on that list at $200,000. Whoops. And the lagoon fencing could be a $200,000 project.
And I'm only asking, I guess, because even when you talk about town hall, it seems like we'd need to have a pretty idea of the cost and what that means to those people in that area.
Yeah.
And evaluating or prioritizing?
The board has already set aside $735,000. So that, and the pump project that's underway, I think the pricing on that's currently $439,000 total. So we will have, I believe there's enough funds there to at least do the first four projects and maybe a little bit of the others. And we're not sure if the lagoon needs to be dredged yet, but we do, you know, obviously that would probably have to happen sometime. So we would want to start accumulating funding for that. The backup generators have not spoken to DNR about, they are requiring that in larger cities at pump stations. This is a little bit different kind of system, because it's not just large pump stations, but it's possible that that would become a requirement. And even if not, it may just be a good thing to have in the system.
Because I'm looking at it really as us almost prioritizing, too, at all the information that helps us determine what's really needed. When you say, looking at option two, and then saying, that's the route we want to go, what are the projects that determine that for us and?
Yeah. If we're gonna do, if we're gonna do a town hall, and, you know, for sure, like to have those details, I think the conversation with the engineer makes to proceed with that, so that we've got accurate information, so that you, you're comfortable with the figures. If, I'd say the figures aren't accurate, but if you're not comfortable, because you don't know the source, you're right, like, yeah.
So my concern about that would be that we don't have an engineer currently under contract. It will likely take them a while to develop those. And I, I think it's, time is probably of the essence to get at least some, some movement on the rates sooner rather than later.
When you say, I don't want to go into a town hall without numbers, though.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, I mean.
You have estimates. You have those estimates I've given you. But if you, if we wait for engineering numbers, I'll have to reach out, but I would expect that to be several months.
Okay.
That, so we just need to be aware of that.
Has, has Ben commented on any of those kind of estimates at all, or weighed in on?
I think he's worked with people on them, but he doesn't typically do some of those kinds of projects. They're, they're not really within the scope of what he provides. So that's why he and I probably would both feel more comfortable for some of them, that we have an engineer involved.
I know when we chatted yesterday, you mentioned that there might be, oh, comparables that you might be able to get.
City of Ames puts out a study, and I, I do have that, but it's what I forgot, because it's been a while since I looked at it, was they only look at cities with more than 10,000 population. And they also, I don't think any of them are a lagoon-only system such as we have. So while I can, I do have rates of some of the larger systems, they're not really apples-to-apples. I did look at some of the rates of some of the smaller communities in our immediate area, and those range anywhere from $40 to $110.
Okay.
So, we're definitely on the lower end of that right now.
Since it's already June 4, I think the timeline of July 1 is a little aggressive for what we need to accomplish.
Yeah. It's, I think, I probably should have changed that, because that's probably unrealistic at this point. Yeah. unrealistic at this point, yeah.
Yeah. Because we need to, just can't spring it on the residents. They need an option, and we're going to, we're going to hear outcry. But it needs, I mean sadly, we need the increase. Residents are getting hammered hard, though. I just got my home insurance bill, and I'm 42%. I was shocked. I mean, we can say, well, this is just a small increase, but there's increases in everything, and it's hitting our residents hard.
Well, and you don't want people to feel surprised, or that really we've just kind of sprung it on them, even though we can, I think, as far as our role as supervisors, we could raise those rates, but yeah, communication piece would be important, I think.
And I do appreciate the three-year. Yeah. Just to give folks the ability to budget and plan and know what's coming, so they don't feel sprung on future years.
In my life, five or 10.
Keeps us in the practice of not going so long.
Yeah, I would hope, I'm going to try, I will be looking at this every year, and hopefully, we will all share that conversation.
So do we need more information then, before we take any action, or what is the board's, I mean?
I need more information.
I do, before we go to a town hall, for certain. That's got to be the cases, I guess, that we're comfortable with, but as far as next steps, and I guess meaning to move this, keep moving it forward, I'm not prepared to, yeah, vote on anything as far as an action on those proposals.
Essentially, we just want to get a little more confident in what the cost of these different projects could be.
And timelines, I think, too. So is Ben, do you think Ben would be more helpful with that, Michelle, or do you need someone else?
If we're talking about projects that, yeah, it's, we have to, we need to get an engineering firm hired. I can.
Has he seen this update or presentation?
He has not seen this particular presentation. Since he's the major vendor, I didn't want to, it didn't feel fair to put him on the spot with this. But he and I have talked about it, and he is aware, obviously knows there's an increase needed. He and I have talked through that.
Well, we've talked about having him participate at the town hall.
And I think he'd be happy to do that.
But he'd need to know, too.
And you said these planned improvements are ARPA?
Most of them, yes.
And those are already cleared? Do those need scored? Do those need, where are they at in the process?
So the board did approve probably most of the projects in that first section. Let me try to get back to it.
Just thinking through, because that's, within the next six months, that has to get at least a war.
It depends which kind of ARPA money we use. So we, the board did transfer $735,000 in replacement revenue dollars to the system to be used for projects. So most of that, of course, well, more than half, will be taken up with the pump panels that are underway. I am, I'm going to hope, we're going to cover those other three projects in that first group with that, those funds. I have had, all these other proj, in fact, all the projects are on the ARPA worksheet, so they could be done with what I call expense category dollars or replacement revenue, whichever you choose. And, but we haven't gone any further on that, because we wanted to make sure we were doing some kind of rate increase and getting this up to where it needs to be if we were going to continue to invest in the system. And I will say, we are projected, I'll feel better, I think, once the Pine Crest renovations are bid and we actually have an amount for them. But based on the numbers that we have today, we currently have used, if you will, all of that ARPA expense category. So that gives us a little more flexibility, that we don't have to do everything under the expense category.
Although, because these are water and sewer, I mean, these are pretty easy, these are pretty low scores.
They definitely qualify.
Yeah.
Yep, that's.
It would be nice to have the flexibility of those replacement dollars versus eating up replacement dollars with dollars that would be scored low and almost certain to be eligible.
Exactly, that's the.
I would think almost unquestionable. That's probably our option.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, I'd prefer to not use replacement on these and, and get them scored and move through that process, but that's got to be.
It'll be, that will become a little more of a challenge, because those have to be contracted by December 31 of this year.
So what would the timeline on, sorry, so if we were to try to get to that date, can we, it doesn't have to be today, but can we sort of work through what that schedule looks like?
Can't be today, then I'm going to have to try to get, yeah, soft, try to get with an engineering firm and see if they're even.
If it's doable.
Yeah, if they can do for us to be able to do that by the end of December.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So I think we're all in agreement with that, probably is the next step. Um, you any comments?
Would have been nice to have Ben here today if we're going to talk about anything for Washburn.
Sure, yeah.
He's supposed to be attending monthly meetings. I don't think he's been here for a while.
It is time for an update from him. We did, the new contract doesn't necessarily require monthly, just periodic, but it probably is time to have him come.
All right, anything else, those today, Board?
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
All right, any reports or information from the board? No, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The meeting's.